Hey, good evening and welcome everyone. We're gonna go ahead and get started. My name is Michelle Woods Matthews and I'm the Communication Director for the City of Norwalk. Welcome to the city's Cannabis Ordinance Virtual Town Hall Meeting. I want to thank all the participants joining virtually for this important conversation. I also want to thank our panelists, who you'll hear from today, subject matter experts on this subject. Andrea Comer, the Deputy Commissioner at Connecticut Department of Consumer Protection. Stephen Hernandez, the Executive Director at Connecticut Commission on Women, Children, Seniors, Equity and Opportunity. We also have local subject matter experts here in Norwalk. Lamont Daniels, our Chief of Community Services at the City of Norwalk. And Steve Kleppen, our Director of Planning and Zoning at the City of Norwalk. I also wanted to share a few words from Mayor Rilling, who wasn't able to join this evening, to share why he wanted to host this town hall. As you may know, in 2021, state legalized cannabis and put the decision of where to designate the sale, use and cultivation of cannabis in the hands of cities and towns. And Mayor Rilling thinks it's important to have residents to have restrictions in place for where cannabis can and cannot be used. And he wanted the city to host this town hall because he wants residents to have the opportunity to ask questions and learn from subject matter experts. Mayor Rilling has heard many different questions from residents, understandably so, about the cannabis ordinance being proposed by the ordinance committee tomorrow. Since it's new, there's a lot of questions and he wants you to have the opportunity to ask those. For anyone with comments that they want to share directly with the ordinance committee, we recommend you go to the meeting tomorrow and I'll drop the link for tomorrow's meeting and the details in the chat in a few minutes so that you're able to attend that meeting and share your input directly tomorrow. Tonight's town hall is an educational opportunity where the panelists will answer your questions about this matter. And Mayor Rilling also wants you to know that this town hall is just the first step. As this conversation evolves in Norwalk, we plan to have more public discussions that continue listening to and answering community questions. And now I'd just like to quickly explain our program. So in a moment, I'll have the panelists introduce themselves and take a few minutes to share their background and how they're connected to this work. And after that, we will get the questions that were submitted in advance of tonight through the online form. And then for anyone who wants to submit questions virtually tonight, we ask for you to please do so in the chat. And in order for those questions to be heard, we want to get to all of them, but we might not have time to get to all of them, but we hope to. But if you could please submit your first name, your last name, your address. We know that you're a resident of Norwalk as we want to make sure to answer all our community's questions. The question and then whom the question is directed to, if you have a preference or idea. So let's get started. I'd like to turn it over to our panelists to share their background and we'll start with Lamont Daniels.
Thank you, Michelle, and to my distinguished colleagues and panel, Andrea Stevens. And Stevens, I'm honored to be with you this evening. So, good evening, Norwalk. Again, my name is Lamont Daniels and I serve as your Chief of Community Services for the great city of Norwalk, Connecticut. And so in my role, I serve as a cabinet member under Mayor Rilling. I oversee the Health Department, the Human Services Department, and work collaboratively in my leadership role with our library system. And so as Michelle pointed, I'm going to share, you know, specific, you know, my role in terms of working directly on this this opportunity that I believe is afforded us here in the city of Norwalk. And let me first, you know, just, you know, by talking about, you know, as I was thinking in preparing, you know, we know the cannabis industry is filled with discussions about a term, about a term that has gained prominence recently, and that term is social equity. And there are so many definitions when you think about social equity. But I think what is important, at least how, you know, we frame it here in Norwalk and then talk more about my specific role, is that when we think about equity, we're talking about social equity accounts for the reality that, given, you know, talking about the reality around that, giving everyone the exact same resources does not necessarily mean we're playing on the same level field. And so with that in mind, in our state and our panelists, I'm looking forward for Andrea and Stephen to kind of unpack that from the state perspective. But let me say this, that the law establishes Social Equity Council and outlines specific strategies to make sure that people from communities hardest hit by the war on drugs, two things, have the opportunity to get into the industry, but it also outlines a framework to help our communities that were directly impacted. And to a great extent, you know, people of color in communities that are very vulnerable, you know, during, you know, drug convictions and long-term prison terms. So the council was established, the council also established, what you'll hear is disproportionately impacted areas. Notice if I sense this tracks, and the social council identified a formula to decide what those communities are. But important to note, here in Norwalk, we have eight that have been disproportionately impacted by the war, you know, on drugs and conviction rates and also unemployment rates that are high based on the formula that they outlined. So, you know, what is my specific role? Well, my specific role is very specific around the tax revenue from retail cannabis sales. And it's designed to support these communities and help them repair. In Norwalk, there will also be a 3% sales tax dedicated to the city in our town where the sale occurs. So what this means is that 3% municipal tax will be directed to local governments for specific community reinvestment purposes. And I'll talk about that very briefly. I'll hurry up. I always have a lot to say. This is important because the way we see it here in Norwalk, you know, this new funding stream enables us to determine the most effective ways to implement realistic initiatives, while also managing expectations and measures the benefits while directing these new resources. We don't know what this new tax revenue is going to bring to our city, but what is most important, we want to identify and plan a structure so that when this does happen, we have a comprehensive way to support our communities. So we've been planning, we plan to have a similar approach to what our state is working on to ensure that the cannabis program is grown equitably and that the state funds from these sales are used, outlined in the statute. And that's pointed out in our draft ordinance. This revenue goes into the city's, what is called the Cannabis Trust Account. It will go right back to our community. We certainly see this as a unique opportunity, not only to reverse things that have impacted our community, but also to set a new path to really invest in programs that address and meet the needs of our most vulnerable. So the city's Cannabis Trust Account has the potential to help fund critical initiatives such as education programs, youth employment programs, training programs, services to reduce the recidivism rate, and mental health programs, and also community civic engagements and more. There is so much more we can do for the community with these funds. So in closing, I'll say that, you know, in the past three years that I've been in this position, I've had a great honor and privilege to meet many of our city's social service providers who every day serve our constituents. I've observed personally, time and time again, the great work our nonprofit community does and always rise to the occasion. We saw this when the COVID-19 pandemic hit our community. So I look forward to partnering with our social service community. They know firsthand what the needs are and make sure we're looking at it from an equity lens. And I look forward to also partnering with you. By far, you know, this is not going to change everything in Norwalk at once and it's far from perfect, but without question, you know, it gives us the opportunity to commit ourselves to be thoughtful, comprehensive, and reinvest these funds to support initiatives and programs so that we can make a real difference in our communities, specifically the lives of our residents. So thank you. I look forward to being a part of this conversation. Thank you, Michelle.
Thanks so much, Lamont. And Steve Kleppen, if you could introduce yourself next, the Director of Planning and Zoning at the City of Norwalk.
Sure. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you for giving me some time to meet with everyone tonight. I promise I'll be brief to make up for Lamont so we can keep on track tonight. So the Planning and Zoning Department, we have, you know, it's actually several departments in one. It's obviously the planning phase, which looks at the long-term growth and guidance for what the city should be doing going forward. Zoning is more or less the enforcement piece, making sure that whatever happens within the city falls within the guidelines and rules that are established. And we also have a conservation piece as well. For the purposes of cannabis rules, we're really looking at the enforcement zoning piece of things. And since the city is considering going down the path of allowing cannabis retail sales and/or cannabis cultivation, it makes sense to figure out where that should go, what does that look like? What are the rules around that? What kind of bounds should we establish? So my task was really to kind of put that framework together. And like all good planners, I asked my friends what they were doing. So I got some feedback from fellow planners who have looked at this and, you know, we started the framework to wrap the regulations around that. Based on the outcomes of the ordinance hearings and further guidance from the city, we'll advance any zoning forward with the, you know, target to try to get something done by the end of the year. Just because, and I think Andrea and Steve could provide further guidances, but if that's when the actual retail sales start to become possibilities for communities within the state, that we'll have our guidance in place if and when we get applicants to open up shop. So that's kind of why I'm here. I'm happy to take any questions people have later on.
Thanks so much, Steve. Okay, now we'll pass it to Andrea Comer, the Deputy Commissioner at Connecticut Department of Consumer Protection.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks to Mayor Rilling and Michelle for hosting this conversation. I'm excited to share space with Lamont and Steve and my buddy Stephen. My name is Andrea Comer and for the purposes of this discussion, I wear two hats. I'm the Deputy Commissioner for the Department of Consumer Protection, which regulates both the medical cannabis and the recreational marijuana sectors, among other things. And I chair the Social Equity Council, which is responsible for promoting equity in this fledgling industry and overseeing reinvestment in those communities that were most harmed by the war on drugs. Lamont talked about social equity and the definition. As far as the legislation goes, social equity is defined as having lived in a disproportionately impacted area for a certain period of time and falling within a certain income threshold. He also talked about the disproportionately impacted areas and, you know, the legislation requires that we recertify those areas every year. But we are proposing a change to that language so that there aren't constant shifts in what those areas look like. Those communities that were most harmed by the war on drugs are very clear. There is not a whole lot of room for confusion around that. And so what we're hoping to do is really come up with a definition that we can codify in statute that makes it clear what the intent of community reinvestment looks like. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Andrea. Okay, now we'll pass it to Stephen Hernandez, the Executive Director at Connecticut Commission on Women, Children, Seniors, Equity and Opportunity.
Thank you so much. It's really great to be here with the city of Norwalk. I'll tell you, it's encouraging that Norwalk is having this conversation for so many reasons. You know, the commission's involvement in this work has been now for a few years now. We were formerly only the Commission on Children. I was the attorney for the Commission on Children. That was my initial engagement. And life was a lot simpler then because in those days, we were, our response to the possibility of legalization was very simple. And it was really make sure that you regulate, if you do legalize, to ensure that children are safe from what could be the potential impacts of cannabis on the developing brain. We knew the medicinal uses for children with very high-level special medical needs, but we also understood that there were some perils on the developing brain and their exposure to cannabis. And then, of course, as our jurisdiction expanded, our vocabulary about what was really happening here, not only the sociology of the legalization, but also the opportunity, the need for good regulation, what happens when you remove a once illicit substance out of the hands of a drug dealer and you put it in the hands of industry? Very similar to what happened during the legalization of alcohol. And so our engagement expanded as well. And we started thinking about a lot of what you've heard now, which is the historical disproportionate impact of stigmatizing and really making illegal a substance, which in a lot of ways is very different from some of the other substances that drug dealers had at their disposal. What happens when you legalize? What happens in a social context, but also in a structural context? How do you keep kids safe? Yes. But how do you ensure that people who have had limited access to opportunity in communities can really have a leg in and a leg up to some of these emerging industries? But, you know, one thing that we've asked community from the very beginning is to not stop imagining at cannabis. The very same questions that our Social Equity Councils are dealing with in terms of lack of access to opportunity in industry and business writ large apply to all industry and business. So we have a lot to learn about what happens with cannabis in terms of the social equity work is what should be happening in so many other industries from which people of color and the poor have been historically denied entry. And I think that's a real possibility here. The real promise is that we can learn a lot about how we invest in people who have been kept out for so long. You're always going to hear me talking about safety. We're not talking about bread and milk here. We're talking about a regulated concern. And I always think that there are two things that should always be at the forefront in our conversations about our regulated concern. It's keeping children's brains safe and keeping opportunity open because those very same kids who are not being exposed to drugs now, to this particular drug, alcohol, cannabis, also have an opportunity to start their own businesses when they come of age. They have their opportunity to enter the workforce, enter creative industries that are forged around this particular commodity. And I have a lot of optimism for the opportunities that should be available for people who have been historically kept out of industries like these.
Thank you so much, Stephen. We're so lucky to have you and Andrea tonight. So we're going to try and take full advantage of having you tonight with having you answer as many questions that's come in. So we'll go ahead and start some of those questions. I'm going to read a question that was given in advance, starting with a question from someone in Norwalk named Indigo. Norwalk, and this question is directed to Steve Kleppen. Norwalk should allow more than three retail licenses. Many of the recently granted licenses are not held by Connecticut residents and offering more opportunity for businesses will open up the market locals. Can you please tell me why we are only allowing the potential of three retail dispensaries?
Sure. So initially, when the legislation was passed, there was a cap on how many retail establishments and municipality could have based on population. So initially, it was one for every 25,000. And so at the time, the math was Norwalk could have three. That legislation was amended. I don't know the exact date, but it was amended to lift that cap on three. But in discussions, you know, with council members, it was thought that the best avenue going forward was to keep it at three for now. We talked about actually a lower number at one time, but the three felt was like a good number. One concern was if you have less than three, you'll get, you know, say they opened up around the same time, would you get this rush of activity at these, you know, couple of locations and kind of overwhelm the sites in terms of what they could handle for traffic and parking? So we felt that three might, you know, make sense depending on where they're located. So that's what the number settled on. At least the thinking going forward is three will be the working number. Whether that changes in the future, it's undecided.
Thank you so much, Stephen. On that same note, another question directed to you about parking. This question's from Roberta. How does city government plan to provide adequate parking for dispensary customers? Do you intend to confine dispensaries to commercial areas? Will you allow them in so-called mixed-use, high-density communities?
So right now, our thinking is that, yes, they will be only allowed in the, and we're talking about just the retail component of things, that those cannabis establishments would only be allowed in certain commercial corridors. There are restrictions within the legislation and restrictions that the city has thought of in terms of separation distances from certain establishments that we call like sensitive sites. Some easy examples of those are churches, schools, rehab facilities, et cetera, where we had concerns about where those could be located near. So those would be additional separation distances. We've also talked about limiting how close one establishment could be to another. But specifically in terms of parking, overall, our thinking is that we would park them similar to how we would park a retail establishment. The legislation does afford municipalities the opportunity to require additional mitigation at the beginning of the opening of these establishments for police presence to help direct traffic. One thing that we're recommending as initial requirement is that these businesses be located on a property that's, we're starting at a half acre larger with the thinking being that if the properties are a larger piece of land, excuse me, if the business is on a larger piece of land, then that site would hold more parking. So if it's part of a larger plaza where they share parking between three or four or five stores, there's more readily available parking verse like a standalone small shop where they might have a tight site, where technically they could meet the zoning requirements for parking, but they actually could get overwhelmed based off that. In conversations we had with peer communities in Massachusetts, they found that after the establishments were open for a while, that the kind of like the novelty of it wore off and they kind of resumed a normal flow of traffic that they would see with similar establishments, whether that was like a pharmacy or something like that.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Another local question for you, most likely, or Lamont. This question comes from Elizabeth. How will the city be restricting locations for cannabis storefronts? My concern is so no transitioning from restaurants and cute shops to nothing but dispensaries. So I know it has many activities for children, but don't want the entire place to reek of cannabis.
I can start and anybody else, but please feel free to chime in. So as I mentioned, there are restrictions on where these can go and there's a lot of sensitive sites, as I mentioned. So think about South Norwalk in particular, there's a lot of churches. So if you're within a thousand-foot radius of one of those establishments or a school, some of these other things that kind of shrinks your window of opportunity where these can be located. I know there's been some concern expressed about potentially locating them in South Norwalk. Our kind of thinking is the best locations might be along Westport Ave or Connecticut Ave or even along Main Ave. You know, ideally, this is going to be something that attracts people to the city because, you know, other communities are not allowing it. So if Norwalk decides to go the path of allowing these, we think it could draw people from other areas. So ideally, we'd like to get them to their location, you know, on roads that can handle it, you know, which would be our major arterial routes.
Thank you so much. And this next question is from Ginger. It might be a question for Stephen or Andrea. Shouldn't there be warning labels on the products being sold, just like tobacco and alcohol? Prevention is key.
So the short answer is yes, and there are. The Department of Consumer Protection has come up with policies and procedures around what the labeling has to be. There has to be a warning label on it. It has to look a certain way so that children are not confusing it with candy or gummies that are not intended for children's use. I think there is, there's a little bit of misconception. I think that the policies and procedures, because it is pretty complex and it's a multi-page document. It may not be out in the public square to the extent that maybe we would like. But there are definitely going to be some guardrails up so that it doesn't, it's not, you know, you're not going and picking it up and thinking that it's something that it's not.
Thank you for saying that, Andrea. You know, we've learned so much from sister states who have rolled out their own products. And we have seen instances in other places of product that was sold to look like gummy bears, that were sold to look like other attractive nuisances that bring in the eye of the young observer. So it is important that we have those warnings. It's important that we don't create products that attract the little ones. But it's also important that we have good education around it. I think you intimated this, Andrea. What's, what are we doing that's different from other places? Connecticut can be very steady and can actually lead in this way. And I think that's part of the education for parents. So their parents can be most informed too. You know, my friend Ginger Katz, who asked that question, is such a thoughtful participant in the conversations on prevention. And oftentimes, the best information that we get, parents, the more prepared they are to address prevention when it comes to the young ones. So thank you for asking that question.
And Michelle, if I could just quickly add, you know, and then Ginger, thank you for that question. I just, you know, from the community service side, that we look forward to partner, we give a shout out to the Norwalk partnership, to work with our key organizations so that we are thoughtful in our citywide campaigns, specifically looking at young people, working with our school districts. So, you know, really, really, you know, just really excited around the opportunity to not only bring this businesses and opportunities here, but more importantly, you know, working with our community providers in a different way to ensure we don't have those situations that have been challenged by other communities across the country doing this. So, you know, without being saying, you know, we most certainly plan to work with our providers who work with this young population to ensure that we're all saying the same thing at the same time.
And if I may, just as a last thought, the statute itself, the legislation was not silent on this. And it has tasked the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services with coming up with an educational campaign specifically for the community writ large, but also for young people so that they are aware of the dangers of substance abuse generally, but also what to be, what to be on the lookout for as it pertains to cannabis.
And this is a shout out to the investors, right? The investors, I consider the investors, the state, community, local government. Invest in prevention because, you know, the state does have these rules, but there are so many great preventive opportunities in each of your towns, wherever you may be. Norwalk has always been a leader in so many ways when it comes to not only protecting kids, but also arming kids to be ready for their future and their lives. Invest in prevention, but also invest in opportunity. What are some of the opportunities that young people are growing into in their town? And what do they have to look forward to?
Yes, and I'm glad you mentioned the reinvestment piece. I know Lamont mentioned how the city of Norwalk intends to use the revenue that comes in as far as reinvestment. But one of our charges is to, is to take some of the revenue that comes into the state and apportion it to those communities that have been harmed by the war on drugs for community reinvestment. And we really want that to be a grassroots effort. We don't want to decide what reinvestment looks like for Norwalk, for New Haven, for Hartford. We want those communities to say, this is what we need most. And so if, in fact, education is what this community wants most, you will have an opportunity to have a say in that.
Thank you guys so much. That was very informative. Our next question comes from Andy. It's a two-part question. The first part might be for Steve and the second part might be for anyone. The first part is how close will these stores be in places where families gather, such as parks, houses, the worship and schools? And the second part is if the age is 21 to use in public, how will that be enforced? Will residents have to call the police when they suspect someone under the age is using? Steve, do you want to handle the first part of that question?
Sure. And as we mentioned a little bit ago, that there are, at least the considerations we have at the moment are to restrict where they can be in relation to those sensitive sites, as I mentioned, the churches, the schools, daycares. As I mentioned, the churches, the schools, daycares, rehab centers, et cetera. So as part of the process, anybody that's looking to open up a retail cannabis establishment will have to get us a map, which will have to work in conjunction with a surveyor who's going to have to verify that there is nothing within that radius from their proposed location to one of these sensitive sites. We've also put some language in there restricting how close the building can be to a residentially zoned property. Because we want to try to, you know, you know, we want to try to limit it, the exposure to where there could be a congregation of kids specifically. But at the same time, not make it so restrictive that there is nowhere they can go because it was just limited every possibility based on those restrictions. So I think we have a pretty good framework in place to kind of put our bounds around that. And based on feedback we'll get, you know, obviously tonight. The next phase, assuming council decides to move forward this, the Planning and Zoning Commission will have to take it up as an amendment to their regulations like they would any other amendment. And there'll be a further public conversation on that and further questions on those distances or whether they're appropriate or not. And, and those are things I think we can adjust on the fly pretty easily based on the feedback we get.
That's great. I'll tell you what I love about this discussion is that we weren't having these discussions when this product was in the illicit market. No one cared whether they were selling drugs and cannabis and potentially laced cannabis in front of a church, potentially laced cannabis in front of a school. No one cared. No one cared about density or placement. And what's great about bringing out a product into the light is that the public can ask these questions, can create limitations, but also opportunity at the same time.
Thank you so much. And can anyone answer that second part just about the age limit and enforcement?
So, go ahead. Yeah, no, I was going to say the enforcement is really, it's a, it's a local issue, right? In terms of how each municipal department chooses to enforce. I will say that the legislation does ask the state to provide training to its officers around how to recognize someone who is under the influence of cannabis as opposed to under the influence of alcohol, for instance. So, but I think exactly how each local police department will carry out enforcement is a, is a discussion for that municipality's police department and its chief.
And I think, Michelle, I think the ordinance committee is going to get into that in more detail tomorrow night, I believe.
Great, thank you both. The next question comes from Patrick. He's wondering about employment. So his question is, why can we have a license to grow marijuana at a safe home like a self-employer with all legal licenses, inspections, laboratories, cannabis inspection, ETC? It would not be a bad idea. So I guess he's asking why people can be their own employers and grow marijuana at their home as a self-employer? And that might be a, a good question for Andrea or Steven at the state level.
So there are several license types that are available. One of them is a micro cultivator, which allows you to grow in a very small space. I do believe at some point, I don't know if it's in effect now, but I believe ultimately you will be able to grow at home if that's what you, what you prefer to do. I think if you're talking about growing it in your home and then selling it, that is something, that's part of the reason why this is being legalized. It's so, is so that it can be regulated. And what we want to ensure is that the products that are being sold meet certain standards and requirements and are keeping the population safe and healthy.
Thank you. Our next question might be for you, Steve. It comes from Justin. He asked, how different will zoning laws pertaining to liquor stores be from the anticipated ones from recreational marijuana sale locations? What is the reasoning behind those divergence?
So currently Norwalk doesn't have restrictions on how close one liquor store can be to another. And a lot of communities regulate that, Norwalk does not. We did take some of the hours, for example, to match those up in terms of the sales. You know, from, from a just overall development of zoning rule, since this is brand new and it's, you know, a topic that's going to generate a lot of passion and concern, it, it's probably just better and easier to start a little smaller and then make it easier going forward if you feel it's something that is accepted within the community and, and something people, you know, don't see as an issue. But it, it's harder to reverse that. So if you just didn't apply any bounds or any parameters around where these, where these can go, and then you've got 10 of them and there's an issue with three or four, and then it's harder to claw those back. So it's, it's easier to start small and go bigger going forward. Once, you know, we have a track record with these kinds of uses.
Thank you, Steve. The, the next question is for Andrea and it comes from Melissa. And she asked, do you know if there's a target deadline for lottery announcements? And maybe Andrea, you could share some background information about that process too?
Sure. So, and thank you for the question. So the lottery process is two-part. The first part is for the social equity applicants. Does the law states that for every social equity, social equity license you, we award, there has to, there will be a general lottery license awarded. So the social equity lottery rolled out first for all of the license types. There are nine of them. And then following that, following that process, there will be an opening for the lottery, the general lottery. And part of the reason for the delay in the general lottery is that because we have to have a full complement of social equity applicants that are certified as meeting that criteria, we can't move on to the general lottery. So for instance, we have six social equity retail licenses that we are awarding in this lottery round. The first round where the lottery picked six, one of those retail applicants did not meet the social equity criteria. So then we had to pick a seventh. And so now that we have the full six, they move on to the, to DCP for further processing. And once all of those license types have been completed, that's when we will start the general lottery. We have, we have finished the lottery, the initial part of the lottery for social equity applicants already. But because of that denial, we will have to run additional lottery. So we are hopeful that the general lottery will be started before the end of this year. My guess is probably sometime next month.
Thank you so much. The next question comes from Marjorie. And she asked regarding using cannabis, you state it can't be on city-owned property. Does that include streets and sidewalks? Also, can hours of operation be limited and not extended such as hours of a bar? Perhaps you could narrow liquor store hours to cannabis store hours?
Yeah, so I, I think we touched on that a little bit, that the hours of, you know, and I'm speaking strictly more forward, like the retail sales piece of it, that those hours we're thinking would mimic what you could do at liquor stores. And I think the best folks to answer the public consumption piece would be council. Not to punt, but to punt.
Great. So I just want to remind folks, if they have questions, to put them in the Q and A. I'm scrolling through to see if we have any more.
And Michelle, if I, if I could, I did see where someone mentioned or sort of expounded on Ginger's question about warning labels and talked about RIRACCA not stating that. And as I mentioned, the policies and procedures, which is separate from RIRACCA, does in fact require warning labels. In fact, it has a warning statement that has to be outlined by a red box saying that it's not FDA-approved, that it may be intoxicating, cause long-term physical and mental health problems and other side effects, that it is illegal to operate a vehicle or machinery under the influence of cannabis. It must be kept away from children. So that information is provided in the policies and procedures.
With muted, thank you so much. The next question here comes from Erin. She said, well, the city of Norwalk incentivized and assists participants through utility discounts like Norwich, Norwich, Connecticut did, making available under or non-utilized buildings at discount purchase or lease prices? I don't know if that's a good question for you, Steve, or if that's something that the council has to determine in the future.
I don't have an answer to that. I was going to ask Lamont if that was something that, you know, some of the things that they were looking at. But I'm not, I haven't seen that question asked before, so it's, it's a good question.
It's a great question because it's, it shows the interconnectedness of emerging markets and opportunities to age-old questions about what you want to see in your city. You know, one of the, one of the questions was about density. Another one was about parking. Another one was about preserving sensitive sites. These are things that people have questions about, about everything, not just about this emerging product. So it, this is one more opportunity to have these tough conversations about revitalizing our neighborhoods, bringing vibrancy back to, to buildings that may be empty. And one more opportunity to do so as well.
Great, thank you so much, Steven. Another question comes from Claire and she was wondering about the moratorium that the common council put in place. Steve, I don't know if that's a good question for you. If you could just explain what the moratorium was for and when it will be and when it will end in Norwalk.
I, I, I'm sorry, I, I don't know when the expiration period ends. I apologize. I wasn't really focusing on that aspect of it. But I think the moratorium was, you know, first settled into just because there, there's this new, new thing you can do. You can sell cannabis within this, within the state. You can potentially grow it. As you recall, they, they, this, I don't remember the year, but it started out with medical marijuana. So that was the first thing you could do. You could potentially sell that in a dispensary. And then you could grow that, you know, if the community allowed it. So now it's recreational cannabis that, that can be sold, can be sold either by itself or as in a dispensary with, with the medical and can also be grown in, in different sized facilities. So the, that kind of the purpose for council was to take a look at, do we want to do this? And if so, what does that look like? So that's, that's kind of the, the stage they're at now. And tomorrow night's the public hearing to talk about what they're thinking and the next steps. And then they'll kick the ball to probably planning and zoning to enact the things on the end. But as I mentioned, like where do the retail establishments get to go? And where can you grow these as well? So that, that's kind of the stage we're at now.
Thanks, Steve. And another question just came in from Suzanne. I think Andrea could ask, are the social equity licenses in addition to the three retail locations or just a separate pathway?
So the, each municipality will decide how many, how many establishments they want to have. The social equity, I guess it depends on who, who arrives first, right? And who gets approval first from, from Norwalk's zoning body. So if a social equity applicant comes to Norwalk, gets the approval, then they will be able to open a retail establishment. If, if there is a non-social equity applicant who's, who's second in line or third in line, then they will, then they will get one. So it's not a separate pathway. They are all sort of part and parcel of the, of the same.
Thanks. I'm not sure if anyone wants, wants to add to that. We have another question that asked about the equity licensing. If not. So this next question comes from Jacqueline. Is there a difference between equity licenses for medical versus recreational use?
So the medical marijuana bill did not have a separate provision for social equity. The recreational cannabis bill did. So while it wasn't prohibitive for what you might define as a social equity applicant to seek a license to sell medical marijuana, the legislation around recreational cannabis was very intentional about wanting to have a one-for-one parity in licensure.
Thank you. The next question comes from Tanner. Some of the restrictions on retail locations set forth, such as requiring larger lots for, for more parking and exclusion from a large radius around churches, make it effectively impossible for stores to be located in a walkable area. This makes the new cannabis industry more inaccessible to people who don't or can't drive, who are disproportionately belong to the same communities who were most affected by the war on drugs. Does the city consider this inequity within its proposed policy?
I mean, it's a fair question, fair point. Something else, again, that's, that's another data point to think about before the final rules get adopted. It's a good point. But the thinking as of now, as I mentioned, probably was to be more restrictive at first, just taking into consideration the concerns that go around the, you know, and, and there's probably going to be a stigma associated with a lot of these uses when they first open up and concerns raised. So, and then that's kind of why the state really put some bounds around things like signage. So, you know, you can't have like a big cannabis leaf out there, for example. So I think for now, that, that's the thinking and the recommendation. Will they change going forward? Quite possible, but that's where we're at for now.
Yeah, and I think that's a good example of a lot of the comments that we've heard. So we, we encourage you to go to the committee meeting tomorrow night and share, share your input and your thoughts. Another question just came from Lisa. Can you explain how this rectifies issues caused by the war on drugs?
You know, when you think about, when you think about the war on drugs as a, as a frame, as a framing, you know, I think more accurate, more accurate is a war waged on people with weapons as, drugs as the weapon. It was a war waged on people with drugs as the weapon. And whether it was at the very beginning when drugs were created and tested on people that knew or didn't know that the drugs were being tested on them, whether they were illicit drugs that were created to drive illicit economies from far away or nearby, or ultimately whether it was drugs as a pretext to attack communities that were either emerging or emergent, mostly black and brown and poor communities in urban areas. Drugs have been weaponized to attack people. And so the question is, how do we restore the balance that was interrupted by the weaponization of drugs to attack people? First of all, by removing those drugs that would, out of the hands of drug dealers who have no interest in the well-being of community, removing them from the markets, the international markets of drug dealers that have no interest in community, getting rid of those drugs that would first and foremostly only destroy life rather than do whatever it is that alcohol and marijuana do. They can destroy young lives certainly, but the evidence is unclear when it comes for adults. But more than anything, it's really ensuring that there is opportunity for people who were targeted through drugs as a pretext. There are so many different sociological reasons over history that this has happened. But the most important one, I think, is the targeting of black and brown bodies in this country and the pretext that have been used to perpetuate that.
I can add to that. So The New York Times published a few years ago, a visual op-ed by Jay-Z where clearly sort of he voices over this animation of the war on drugs. And it started back in the seventies with Nixon. It was doubled down by President Reagan and then further doubled down, I would say, or maybe quadrupled down by some of the policies implemented by President Clinton. Right? And so, and to Steve's point, this was, the war on drugs was a war on black and brown people. Full stop. And so, and those communities are continuing to try to recover from the impact of that war on drugs in terms of criminalization. And you can look at the disparity between sentencing for crack versus powder cocaine. And I know this is a conversation about cannabis, but it's very, it's, it's relative to this conversation because it was one more way in which black and brown folks were criminalized at a higher level. So the way this addresses the war on drugs, number one, it decriminalizes marijuana. Number two, it provides an opportunity for those who have been harmed on, harmed by the war on drugs, particularly by incarceration, to have an opportunity to course correct, get into this business if they want to. If they don't want to, then there is the community reinvestment piece. And some communities may say, I want those reinvestment dollars to help folks who are formerly incarcerated to get, to get a leg up and to be able to enter into society in a meaningful way. to get, to get a leg up and to be able to enter into society in a meaningful way. Because, you know, I don't think it's any, any secret that, you know, folks who have been incarcerated have a much tougher time trying to re-enter society. And so why not create some, some opportunities for them to do the right thing as opposed to reverting back to what got them in trouble in the first place?
But thank you for that for both Stephen and Andrea, just, you know, just to add to that as well. You know, to, to really make it local. And I think Andrea pointed out that, you know, with these opportunities that, you know, the city has made a commitment that this has to be a participatory process, that we're looking for the faith community and those that may have their own lived experiences to kind of help us think through, you know, how do we take these investments and really make a real difference? And so one of the good things that I like that, you know, it's restricted, you know, this is, we can't put this in our operational budget to use for other things, is very specific in how this money can be used. I think what's important is that we continue to have these conversations so that our community is engaged. Because I'm a firm believer, the community knows what's best. And so how do we take, you know, what's happening in our communities, looking at these opportunities and really hitting it where it matters? So folks really can, you know, you know, live a better life essentially. And so we will continue these conversations, both from the city side, engaging our nonprofit community, our, engaging our young people. We just launched the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council. I want those young people to be in the room with me to start talking about, oh, what does this mean for you? And if you had an opportunity to make these investments, what does that look like for you? And having other residents and constituents involved in the process. So that's a commitment that we plan to do and that's a commitment that we plan to launch fairly soon as we continue, you know, pending, you know, our public hearing on our, our, our process internally with common council.
Thank you so much. We have another question from Jack, Jack Queen. Is there a difference between equity licensing for medical use versus recreational use?
Think that question was asked already?
Yeah, I think, I thought they had a follow-up. Maybe not. Okay. How about this question from Matt? Given the results of the social equity portion of the lottery whereby the winners are dominated by multi-state operations entering hundreds, if not thousands of applications, does the state have any plan mechanism that will promote locally owned and operated business information? Is that possible? That, is it possible that all Norwalk cannabis licenses will be owned and operated by out-of-state entity?
So thanks for that question. The, so the, I, I refer to this legislation as a stone soup, right? Everybody came with all of their ideas and their hopes and aspirations and put it all in a pot. On the one hand, it made for a 303-page document. On the other hand, it created this sort of disconnect in a lot of ways. The law was silent on how many times someone could apply for a lottery. I suppose from a revenue standpoint, that, that is a positive. But in terms of truly promoting social equity, maybe not so much. You think about the ways in which people, you have to have a certain income limit. But then for the cultivators, for instance, you have to come up with a $3 million fee. So you're going to have to rely on someone who is well-resourced. And by and large, that's going to be a multi-state operator. The Social Equity Council has been looking at sort of ways to mitigate some of this. We made a recommendation to limit the number of equity joint ventures. And an equity joint venture is when a social equity applicant partners with an existing producer or dispensary to create a new company by which recreational cannabis is, is sold. So we put a limit on those because we were very concerned about the domination by multi-state operators. That said, you are not going to be able to prevent all of that. We talked about, could we possibly have a sliding scale? So once you entered more than 10 lottery applications, you'd have to pay more. Truth of the matter is, the multi-state operators, they will pay the additional fee. Or they will just create a bunch of separate LLCs to apply as many times as they want. So that becomes, it becomes a real challenge. I will be the first to say that this legislation had really great aspirations and in some cases that mark was missed. The good news about the legislative process is that you can always come back and make tweaks and try and course correct. But I encourage anyone who has, you know, suggestions or ideas about how this legislation could be stronger, particularly from a social equity perspective, that they reach out to their legislator and let them know. Because, you know, we certainly don't have all the answers and we are open to, to suggestions. But thank you again for the question.
Thank you so much. And we also wanted to clarify that the ordinance that's being proposed tomorrow would prohibit consumption on sidewalks, as a point of clarification from an earlier conversation. And then I think we just have time for one more question from Nicole. Are the DCP warning labels for dispensaries only and not for the cash storefronts we're walking about, we're talking about, where you don't need a medical marijuana card to make a purchase?
So the warning labels are for both. I mean, they've got warning labels for, for medical marijuana, but also for recreational cannabis. I was trying to see if there was a place where I could put in the chat the link to the policies and procedures. Because it kind, it does kind of outline all the, all the specifics around labeling and packaging, among other things. But I can send that to you, Michelle, maybe and you can.
Sure. And I'll make sure that Nicole gets it.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you, guys. Thank you to all our participants for all these thoughtful questions. As we said earlier, this is just the beginning of this conversation, especially because we have the ordinance committee meeting tomorrow and a lot of further upcoming meetings. We want to have more public discussions and we want to hear more of your questions. So we will keep you posted on those upcoming future town halls. But we wanted to also thank our panelists. You were so informative tonight, especially. Thank you, Stephen and Andrea, for joining Norwalk tonight and sharing your expertise and knowledge with all of us. We really, really appreciate it.
Thank you so much for having me and for, for this conversation. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
And just so everyone knows, two things we're going to, and thank you so much, Lamond, and Steve from the city of Norwalk for, for sharing all your expertise as well. In terms of the meeting tomorrow night, the link can be found on our social media. We'll be posting that shortly. We are, we post at the city of Norwalk on Facebook, Instagram and Twitter. The link is also to join the meeting via Zoom, norwalkct.org/meeting. That's norwalkct.org/meeting. And the meeting will be tomorrow night at 7:00 PM. So that's tomorrow, the 20th, from 7:00 to 9:00. And we encourage folks to go and share your thoughts with the committee members. Thank you so much for joining. We appreciate it and have a great night.
Night, everyone.